Dean, I'm Dean. I am Chris Campbell's law partner. So Chris is on vacation and so I am filling in for him this evening. And it's very nice to be here and nice to see all of you.
Okay, I have four o'clock, so I'm going to call the meeting to order. A roll call, I do see that we have a quorum. We have four voting members of the board here. So we do have that. Does anybody have anything they want to add or to the agenda that we don't have? I know this was listed as a working session, but we do have policies that we are going to need to vote on today. And then we will have a closed session meeting at the end. Okay, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda? And I apologize for my raspy voice.
I move to adopt the agenda. This is Mickey.
Thank you. Second?
This is Jimmy. I second that.
Thank you, Jimmy. Okay, did everybody get a copy of the minutes from June 25th? That Tanya sent out? Does anybody have any corrections, additions, or subtractions to those minutes? Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
This is Jimmy. I motion to approve.
Thank you.
The minutes?
This is Mickey. I second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. I have next on the agenda, legal updates. Dean, I don't know if you have heard anything at all. We've, I've not gotten any reports out of Raleigh. There's been some request for us to write our senators to ask that Senate Bill 90 be heard. If you're interested in doing that, and I would like to encourage everybody that will to do that on the board, please send me a note and I'll send you the addresses. It's a select few that we need to contact. We have made the same request of Eastern's board. Chris has sent a letter himself. So if you are interested in that, just drop me a note and I'll send you the addresses for that. Have you heard anything at all, Dean?
This is Dean. I have not heard anything in addition to what you just laid out, Madam Chair. I know the General Assembly pretty much went home or they are coming back at the end of July or beginning of August. I am not sure whether or not they will take up Senate Bill 90. But from my understanding, when the Senate left, they indicated that there would be only certain bills that they would take up when they would get back. And I think the question is whether or not some of our advocates in the legislature can try to squeeze those changes into another bill or get both houses to agree on the conferees and to allow the conferees to get together to agree on a consensus bill that would need, would need to be voted up or down by the legislature. So right now, I hope for all three schools, we're able to get some sort of resolution. I do know it's important to not only you all and certainly the other two schools, but I know it's important to our advocates in the General Assembly as well. So we're still pushing and we are in contact with General Assembly nonpartisan staff, the Fiscal Research and Legislative Analysis staff as well, but not heard anything from them recently either.
Okay, thank you very much, Dean. Appreciate that. I have on the agenda, and get used to seeing this because I'll have it on all of our meetings. They may have something to report sometimes and sometimes they won't. But the committee updates from business and finance, policies, and human resources will always be here. So what we're trying to do is fall into a pattern of our agenda looking the same and being able to cover the important topics each time we need to have a business meeting and such. Wallace is not here yet, I don't think. I haven't seen him come in. Mickey, I know you have policies to be adopted that's coming up next. And Dr. Tate has a report to give also. You want to talk about your policies, Mickey? They do have the 24, 25.
Yes, this is Mickey. The Policy Committee met and we reviewed the 7,000 group of policies and those are all related to personnel issues. We approved them mostly as they are written. We only had three suggestions for changes. The first was in 7240, which is the section entitled Drug-Free and Alcohol-Free Workplace. It was suggested that in Section D, the first sentence be changed to the employee must report to the HR director instead of to the Assistant HR Director. The second change was in Policy Number 7300, Staff Responsibilities. And again, this was exactly the same. The employee shall notify the HR director, not the Assistant Director, if they are charged with or convicted of a criminal offense. And the last thing that we tweaked was 7500, Work Day and Overtime. In Section C of this policy, the sentence, Accurate and Complete Time Sheets of Actual Hours Work During the Week Must Be Signed by Each Employee and Submitted to the Finance Officer. That sentence will be deleted as NCSD employees do not use time sheets in their timekeeping. So that, everything else was approved as it was written. Shall we take a vote, Madam Chairperson?
Yes, but hold on just a second.
Okay.
I want to say welcome back, Ray.
Whoa, Ray's here.
It's good to see you. We're glad that you're doing okay.
Thank you, thank you. And Tammy saying, I'm glad you're okay. And Ray said, yep, I'm getting better. Of course, I've got this brace here. You can see it's a little sore, but.
Well, you're beginning to move a little bit. That's a good sign.
The muscle's not strong though, unfortunately, but it's mobile.
Good, good. Just had to take that moment, Mickey, to say.
Right. I had not noticed him. Shall we go ahead with the vote then? Okay, I'd like to have a motion to accept the 7,000 group of policies as written, except for the changes that we noted.
So.
Do I have a second?
This is Tammy. I second that.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. I think we've passed one more group of policies. Several more still to go, folks, sorry. Thank you very much.
And also, while we were away as a group, the Admissions Policy Committee met. And I'm going to let Tammy talk about that.
Yes. This is Tammy here. The Admissions Committee met on the 11th. And who's on the committee is Dr. Christine Todd, the Speech Language Pathologist, Mark Andrea Phillips, a preschool teacher, Judy Eklund, a long time person, a long time deaf plus teacher, Heather Muck, Mucks Gliney, coordinator for NCSD, Special Education Program. Another person with NCSD Foundation, the president was there. Katie Burns, the Deaf Behavior Specialist. She was a part of the committee. So we all looked at the North Carolina Board of Education Department. Sorry, let me get myself together here. Trying to read my notes. The State Board of Education had approved policies for NCSD, the Eastern, Western, and Morehead School, but we wanted to focus on the North Carolina School for the Deaf and their 2023 to 2024 year. But now we're trying to make a few changes and edits if we can. But the staff at the school, we want their input and we want them involved. And it was nice. They felt happy to be there and to be involved. I don't know if you want to see the policy itself, if I need to share my screen or would you like me to just concise the information? If you want me to share my screen, just really quickly, I can, it'll be really quickly. Let me show you what I've got listed here. I'm just trying to find the document here. Hold on one second. I lost the file. I had it there, but anyway, I will just give a brief summary. Yes, Sandra.
Tammy, I suggest that we, this is Sandy, suggest that we send that out to the board members. And it, I'm not sure, but I think it's been posted in Google Docs also.
Jimmy's confirming and Tammy's saying, yes, someone did that already. I believe I know how to get it. I just have to hunt it down for a second, if you don't mind being patient with me for just a moment. Here it is. Okay, I found it. All right. So you can see here, the North Carolina Board of Education posted and we made the edits in red. We wanted, those are the changes that we made. That first section here is the history, how it was founded, who founded it. The Department of Education, they put that there and we took that out. The admissions criteria, we looked at all of that. And we wanted to edit the verbiage, hearing impaired, and we put deafness. That is actually NCSD's practice. They've been doing that for the past few years. Admissions process. Dr. Todd, who is the Speech Language Pathologist, she added, she felt that the students that are being admitted from public settings or public schools, they might already have an IEP and so we need to get that information. And we wanted to add language. They are saying that we see younger children who haven't been established at a school for us to be able to look at those records once they come here. We need the other schools' documents and we wanted to add that language that the North Carolina School for the Deaf will provide what they need in terms of support and evaluations. Hold on, let me zoom in here. So in red, you see the verbiage that we wanted to include. The North Carolina School for the Deaf can provide necessary supports or evaluations, i.e. psychological, educational, speech, language to expedite admissions. And then if you look at the difference here, this talks about documentation. We don't want to just lightly go through the admissions process. The admission status, temporary filings, students can be accepted and come in and observe the school if they have more needs than what the school can provide. They have 10 days to go through that process and decide if they would like to try to go to another school. And then they have a 90-day process to be involved in that discussion. Once the student is admitted and they've met all the requirements, this is what then happens. The next section that we have is for disenrollment. Looking at that, it seemed a little vague to us, but the committee is going to continue working on revising and clarifying that passage later on. That's one of the admissions committees' projects that we have on the table to be done, completed for the future. And the Free Appropriate Public Education, that is a federal law that we have to include here. This is the legal jargon that we have to include in our paperwork. Due process. So if a parent wanted to appeal the, or make some kind of formal complaint, this is the way that they can do that. They need to be able to appeal to the board. For right now, we're going to leave it as is. And we do want to make this motion to the board to adopt this policy for this year. And this is not the final draft. This is a working draft that we have. Ray? This is Ray. I'm not an attorney, but I am familiar with IDEA and IEP law. I know socially deaf individuals are trying to get rid of the word hearing impaired. Unfortunately, I think recently, maybe a year or two ago, they had a court ruling that IDEAs can use the word hearing impaired. They can use the verbiage. They don't recognize it as deafness. And so my big concern is if we remove that terminology, hearing impaired, then are we not following that federal IDEAs law? That's my concern. I know that in the actual law itself, it doesn't say deaf. It says hearing impaired. So that's just something that I wanted to, for us to think about. Do you mind clarifying that?
Sure. This is Dean. IDEA does entitle the classification as hearing impaired. However, you are certainly welcome to use the terminology that you find to be most appropriate in your policies. But when we are dealing with the state's formal paperwork regarding IEPs and making decisions about students' disabilities and classifications, we will have to use the terminology that's been provided by the federal and state government. But inside these policies that are specific to the institution, to the school, you can change that terminology if you prefer. That would be up to the board.
And we're going to switch, we're going to switch interpreters.
And this is Mark. And I, what I would say is that we just ensure that if the word hearing impairment, because it is one of the 14 area of eligibility, if it is removed from the policy, that the footnote at the bottom remains. That'll, I think that that will be real important because students, students can only meet the deafness category if they satisfy the requirements for it. And we have a large number of students who only satisfy hearing impairment rather than deafness. And so that would be my only recommendation to ensure that the footnote remained.
And so this is Tammy. So I make a motion that we go ahead and adopt the policies with those footnotes and use that expanded explanation as far as the terminology, hearing impaired.
Okay. Tammy has made a motion. Do we have a second?
This is Jimmy, second.
Okay, discussion? Those were good points, Ray, and thank you, Mark. So with the footnotes added, I think we'll be okay. Mark, go ahead.
And this is Mark. And the only thing else that I, that I would like to say is where Dr. Todd has made the recommendation to add the, the words specific to speech, language, psychologically evaluations and educationally evaluations. On, we had asked that language to be broad to where we would only use the words that we would, that we would coordinate with them with districts because we have to ensure that each school has capacity to be able to satisfy the, the requirements of meeting so many speech, language evaluations, psychologically evaluations, or education evaluations. If both of our speech, language pathologists have full caseloads and if we begin having to complete speech, language evaluations that take anywhere from 10 to 20 hours each to complete, we do not want to get into an area in which that our students are not being served because we are working on completing evaluations for local, for one of our 46 districts. That would be my only caution with using such specific language because we don't want for a district to say, well, it's there in your policy and we need you to do it. That, that could cause some capacity concerns, ensuring that, especially when we have so many triennials that happen each year. Oftentimes, our school psychologists and our speech, language pathologists struggle to meet the needs of only our students. So I just want the board members to, to think kind of critically about being so specific because if districts see that, we don't necessarily want to get into the practice of turning them down either because the, the option is there. We would only want to be able to assist a district if maybe perhaps they don't have a psychologist or they don't have a speech, language pathologist that could do that rather than supplementing on top of theirs because we are all working at, we're all struggling with personnel concerns. So I just wanted to kind of throw that out to everybody with that addition because it's so specific to make sure that Chris and Dean and their team really review that before it gets posted that we don't have a, we don't have a demand that we can't satisfy. Thank you for that time.
This is Sandy. How much of that do you do, Mark? How much do you go out into our catchment area?
And this is Mark. And our school psychologist has helped two districts in our catchment area. The Eastern North Carolina area contacts NCSD on a weekly basis asking if we can help, but because those are outside of NCSD's catchment area, I always refer them over to the Eastern School for the Deaf because those students would be, would be going to those, to that school anyway. And so it, it could become a, a concern. Well, that doesn't mean it will, but it could be if the, if the, if we're not really careful with the language. Because I know that there are, there are districts that are struggling personnel-wise that could reach out to us on a constant basis. And some of those referrals that have come to NCSD were even for deaf and hard-of-hearing students that were not interested in coming to NCSD. They were just trying to satisfy the requirement for their IEPs. So there's lots to consider and I have pretty deep conversations with EC directors and sometimes superintendents about what our capacity looks like.
Question?
Tammy.
Yeah, this is Tammy. So the policy right now, as it stands, the terminology, is it broad enough for you? Are you satisfied with that? Are you satisfied with the way it's stated now, Mark?
And this is Mark. And I would, I would really ask our, our school attorneys to review that to ensure that they feel like that it's broad enough. I know that in the original policy, a lot of blood, sweat, and tears went into that language development to ensure that that worked. But if, if Dean feels that it is, that it is acceptable, then, then I'm good with it.
Dean? Dean?
This is Dean. Sorry, I was on mute. Mark, and has Chris looked at the policy yet? For admissions?
And, and this is Mark. He has not looked at the, at the amended policy, no.
Okay. This is Dean. I would suggest to let us take a look at it and, and if we want to adopt it on first reading, we could do that and then we could bring back any additional suggestions, if any, to the board. But I say that with a caveat of whether or not, I don't know when your next meeting is and, and how quickly you all need to get this in place for the upcoming school year.
And, and and this is Mark. And Chris said that we could continue off, he wrote something that we could continue to operate on existing policies until new, until new policies came in. And so however, this specific policy was written only for the 23, 24 school year as well. So I'm not, that would be a question to you then.
This is Dean. If we already have one in place and I know Chris had indicated. I know Chris had indicated that, that you all had a kind of just adopted placeholder policies to fill the gap until you could do new policies. And as you're going through the process of adopting the new policy manual, why don't we go ahead and let us take a look at the changes to the admissions policy? And then we can get it adopted at the next meeting if that, if that will work out for the board. Um, if not, I mean, we can certainly, we feel, or if the board feels like we need to adopt it now, we can adopt it. We can still make changes later as well. Cause I, I will tell you, if we are fortunate enough to get Senate Bill 90 adopted by the General Assembly, um, this policy will need to change again. Uh, because the, especially the part about due process on admissions decisions, that will, that will change significantly. So um, we will be reviewing it multiple times anyway, I, I feel.
And this is, and Tammy's trying to jump in. And I think, and Tammy said Ray has something to say. Yeah, this is Ray. I support what Mark, uh, what you just said. Um, and I know that, um, looking at evaluations and language, uh, the psychological evaluations and everything locally, uh, would request that we revisit that evaluation. Uh, I'd like for NCSD's evaluations, you know, to be redone. And if NCSD is willing to do that and redo that with the understanding that with the IEP, and given those, and given those results of which one, which one is better for the school locally? That local school, but wondering about, asking about the district to see if the deaths, if the school for the deaf can do the evaluations. And those evaluations and those results could show the scores might be low if they were done locally. And then as far as sign language, if NCSD could show those numbers might even be higher. But we need to be able to look at the language and allow the potential there for students to go and have the evaluation. Uh, even if they don't attend NCSD, even, even we would, but we would have the verification there and the documentation for the IEP. That's what I would recommend. I'm not sure if that is going to be possible for that to happen, but that's one of my concerns. And this is Tammy. I think that Mark's concern about the language, like for example, uh, let me go back to the psychological, the educational speech, language, speech and language. I'm wondering if that could be removed, take, take out the example. But if we do take out the word value or just leave evaluation, leave it as a broad word evaluation, would you be okay with that, Mark? If that was what was decided? But we could strike that sample, the example? And maybe that would allow us to play it safe and then the district wouldn't, you know, maybe that would resolve the problem. What would you think? Or, or resolve that issue, Mark? What do you think about that?
Mark?
Yeah, and this is Mark. And again, I, I just share my concern about the capacity that we have at NCSD. And I would just refer those compliance questions over to Chris and Dean.
Uh, yeah, I think what we need to do right now is let Chris and Dean, their office, take a look at the policy. We have something in place. We can use, uh, Mark's already used it once without a new policy there. So, um, that, that has been appropriate. So, uh, Dean, if your office would take a look at that and then get back to us, we meet again. And, hold on a minute. We, we meet again on August 1st uh, for a work session and Chris, Chris will be there so he can give that back to us. He can let us know where we stand with that. Tammy, you had your hand up, I'm sorry.
Uh, no, I'm fine. I was just going to say, uh, maybe we don't act on this right now. Uh, we don't act on these suggested changes until August 1st at that meeting. I think that's what was recommended.
And this is Sandy. Uh, like Dean said, we can, we can vote on the motion that's on the floor at first reading. They can take it and then we can hold final approval until that comes back to us. So, um, is there any more discussion and we will, uh, vote on the first reading? Um, any more discussion? Okay. All those in favor, raise your hand and all those, all those in favor. I gotta hit myself there. Okay, that passes on first reading. Dean, uh, we'll let your office take a look at that for us.
And can we switch interpreters?
Yeah, go ahead.
And, and Tammy said, uh, could I go ahead, Sandy?
Yes, this is Tammy. The committee, um, oh, is there a communicate? No, okay. The committee found that we don't have an admissions coordinator. We used to have Dr. Thea Wilson. She was the director of enrollment at NCSD, but unfortunately she has left. So now the school doesn't have a director coordinator. Um, so I feel like that's really important. That's something that we've got to assign for the time being is for the, for the admissions here.
And Tammy, this is Mark. On, and, and yes, I, I am currently doing it. And in fact, I'm doing a tour with a family tomorrow. Uh, and as soon as we are going to be able to hire a new person, then we will pass that off. But I will also ask a, a temporary staff member to partner with me as well. And so we will, we will ensure that admissions is, is taken care of. But as of right now, it's only me because all, all staff members are off. And they will, yes, and they will be returning on August the 8th.
Jimmy, you had something to say?
Yes, this is Jimmy. Speaking of Tammy's point, yes, uh, we need an accessibility person that knows about the school. They know about the enrollment requirements, the policy, but like Mark just mentioned as well, that's kind of falling on his responsibilities. He's having to do that until we hire an outreach person to be able to do that networking for the community and for enrollment. That's just my two cents. School, the school year is about to start up here soon, so we really need that. This is Tammy. Thank you, Jimmy.
Um, yeah, Mark, I just want to, um, uh, ask a question. If you're doing the admissions, you're also the one that recommends a student doesn't stay. And to me, uh, that's a big conflict. And I, I, I think we need to have an admissions chair appointed because if something comes to the board on appeal, that's coming from you as the director. Uh, and I don't know how parents would feel about welcoming arms and then turning down that kind of thing. So I, I, I agree with Tammy's committee. I think we need to have an admissions coordinator, uh, in place so that that doesn't fall on you.
And this is Mark. I'm not sure if it's a conflict. I would, I would have to refer to Dean on that on. But again, there, there isn't anybody to do it until school starts on August the 8th. So as soon as school starts, then I will, I will certainly need to ask another person to be able to assist with me on that. So I will work with, uh, with a couple of families until the, the two families that are currently expressing interest, I'll work with them until August the 8th then. Dean?
This is Dean. I don't think there's a direct conflict specifically. What might be best moving forward is if you had an admissions counselor or coordinator who was not just a 10-month employee, but was a 12-month employee. I would presume that you would be pretty busy during the summer prior to a new academic year starting in, in the admissions arena. And so having a, a 11 or 12-month admissions person seems to be an appropriate way to um, employ that, that role instead of just a 10-month. But that's certainly not a legal analysis. It's just more of a practical analysis. But I certainly understand the, the potential for a conflict. I just don't think it's a direct conflict. And if we had something come up in that area where the director was kind of serving in both roles and had to make a recommendation to the board, we would have to, I think, analyze that to see what kind of potential conflict there is, if it actually exists and whether or not we need to have another administrator make a recommendation to the board on admissions or disenrollment.
And this is Mark. And the, the new admissions coordinator will be a 12-month employee. Yes. So we have that check mark as well.
Okay. Uh, thank you all. Good discussion. Uh, appreciate that. Uh, assigning committees, uh, or policies that are going to come up when Chris comes back. Uh, Dean may tell us where they are on them, but the 4000s will be our next group of policies to review. And, um, I guess those will be ready for us to assign at our August meeting, Dean?
I hope so. Uh, excuse me, this is Dean. We are, we are working on them, um, and as fast as we can. So I, I'm thinking we will have them before your August meeting or shortly thereafter. So we'll, we'll see. Um, but we are working on them.
Well, we, as a board, we certainly appreciate all the pre-work you do before we get them. That's, it's really helpful. Thank you very much. Um, we do have the, uh, policy 1310, uh, 4002, which is parental involvement. And we've been asked to, um, get a committee together. Um, I would like to, uh, have Tammy co-chair that with Judy Eklund. Uh, um, and Mark, I would like for you to, uh, send us, um, three or four names of staff that would be good to work on that. And then we will add, um, add a couple of our own to that committee. I have not, uh, I've not done the full committee because I think that's a very important plan to be placed, the parental plan. And it comes, uh, in, in relation to the parent bill of rights. So, uh, if you could do that. Uh, Tammy, do you have something you want to say?
Oh, no. Um, I was just saying maybe Ray wants to be involved because he is a parent.
Uh, I'm, I'm not sure that's a good idea with him having a student there. I'm sure he could give you some feedback. I don't, I don't know. Mark, what do you think? I'm going to ask your opinion.
And this is Mark. And I think we, I think we need to ask multiple parents to be involved on, unless we were to receive other guidance not to. And so whether we would need to ask Dean of whether that would be a, a conflict, but I don't, I don't see why from a, just a committee perspective that it would be a conflict.
Good point. Dean?
This is Dean. Uh, there is absolutely no conflict with getting input from parents or, uh, for Mr. Castillo from serving on the committee if he also has a child enrolled at the school. So I, um, I think you just have to go into it knowing that I'm a parent and I'm a board member and that's kind of my experience and that's what I bring to the table. Um, I will give you a little bit of additional background on this policy. So when the committee does get started, this policy has been in the school board association's manual for quite some time, but after the adoption of the Parents' Bill of Rights, it received a pretty significant overhaul or revision by the School Boards Association. And those revisions though are kind of tailored toward, um, schools that, day schools and the traditional LEAs or local education agencies. And so there may be some significant changes that you all want to make um, in regards to residential life, um, for students that, that are on campus, um, 24 hours a day during the week. So um, kind of take that, but I don't see any issue with, uh, a board member serving if they have children or, and I would agree with Mark. I think getting multiple parent input is, it's really part of the policy. So I think that'd be a good idea.
Good. Thank you for that. This is Sandy. Ray, then, uh, you have a comment?
Yes. This is Ray. I just found out, um, that I'm a part of the Governor's Commission. Um, and I just was appointed as the, to, um, serve as a parent on the Governor's Committee. Um, I'm not sure if that's another conflict or perceived conflict.
And this is Mark. Are you talking about the, the DHHS? Uh, where you're replacing Daphne?
Yes.
Wonderful. Good job. Um, I, I doubt it'd be a, a conflict. Oh, sorry. Um, I would not think that it would be a, a conflict.
Okay. Dean, were you starting to say something?
This is Dean. There, there would be no conflict from serving on the, the governor, on DHHS board if you're appointed by the governor and, and working on this policy or serving on this board either. Um, to the extent that you can manage both in your time, that, that would probably be the biggest issue is having time to do it all.
Uh, Tammy?
This is Tammy. So you said um, that you wanted me to be co-chair with who? Who would be the other co-chair?
Uh, Judy Eklund. She's on your admissions committee.
Okay, Judy Eklund.
Okay, and, um, with all this being said, let's go ahead and add Ray to your committee. And then Mark, if you could send us, uh, a couple of potential parents that would be good and, and come to the meetings, that would be wonderful. I think this is an important plan to put in place and it's kind of new. Jimmy?
Yes, this is Jimmy. I know Ray has a deaf child, um, a student that goes to this school. Um, and he is a deaf parent, but I just want to make sure, just to protect himself that we are here to represent all deaf children, not just his son. I don't want the parents in the community to feel that we are one-sided or supporting one versus the other. Um, you know, again, having multiple parents involved, I think that would be beneficial than, more beneficial than just having one to make sure that we don't have any, any perceived conflicts.
And, and Tammy, and Tammy said also that, um, that would be another reason for having other parents on the committee as well.
And this is Ray. Yes, um, I think I might sit on two or three, yeah, if we have two or three parents that are on the committee, I would not, um, I would not cater to just my child. I would think of the general population.
Okay. Let's go forward with that. And, um, at the next meeting, August 1st, or at least by August 15th, we'll have this, we'll have this committee finalized and, um, ready to go. and um, ready to go. And and you real- the committee is working on the parental plan. It's what the policy calls for. Okay. Now, um, Mark, I know that you have an ASL Procedure Policy Committee already assigned with the school. I would like to add a couple of people to that. Uh, one would be Dr. Tate and uh, the other one would be Jimmy to uh, begin working on that with your committee, if that's uh, feasible. And I'll, I'll send those names on to Tanya. Yes, Mark?
And yes, and this is Mark, and that would be wonderful. I will uh, let Key uh, Key Lee know uh, she is, she is leading that committee at the school. And I know that they are on the final processes of that and hope to be able to make a a draft recommendation to the board at the August meeting.
Good. Thank you. Uh.
Can we go ahead and do an interpreter switch?
Yes.
Thank you.
Are you ready?
We're ready. Go ahead. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, the next committee that is to be uh, designated is our marketing committee. And um, there's, there's been um, I don't, I don't want to use an excuse, but there has been so much activity lately going on from uh, this and the other part-time job that I'm not getting paid for. Uh, is that I just have not gotten that committee together yet, but I will have it done before our August fifteenth meeting. Um. Now, uh, Mark sent or Tanya sent out the orientation uh, schedule for this beginning of school. So that checks off another responsibility. We had of making sure the training was in place for the beginning of school, and it looks like they've done a very nice job here. Um, and uh, uh, um, as a former teacher, I was, I was glad to see that you gave them Saturday and Sunday.
And and this is Mark, and what what we have tried to do over the last four, three or four years is we tried to get rid of every single thing that is face-to-face that isn't required by some policy or or law. And so the the only thing that is on the schedule that is, that is uh, not required is the visual phonics that is part of our strategic plan and growth uh, model that we have someone coming in and uh, sadly, but not sadly, that is two days. So that will incorporate a tremendous amount of time for our teachers uh, that they're not going to be very happy with. And then unfortunately, PowerSchool, which is the uh, Student Database System is going away and Infinite Campus is coming in. And so that is requiring an entire full day worth of uh, training from the state level to, for them to be able to learn how to do attendance, how to do grades, uh, how to set up their grade books and all of that kind of stuff. So you'll see that those are our three all-day trainings, but everything else is self-paced. And uh, we have in a little portal that individual, that the staff members just sign in, uh, print and sign their forms, and then we put those over to Human Resources. So we're, we're, we're thrilled with uh, how much training we've gotten rid of uh, and are trying to utilize the LMS system as much as possible as well.
And I appreciate you getting that to us. Um, does anybody have any questions about that? Um, yes, Mickey.
This is Mickey. Um, Mark, we've heard so much about the um, visual phonics. I was just wondering if, if like myself or anybody else, if we could just kind of sit on the back row sometimes just to see what visual phonics is all about, would that be acceptable?
And and this is Mark, and I can certainly ask Shirley uh, a- about that. I know that they're going to be in the project room, which will end up being a little intimate. Uh, we have asked teachers from the Eastern School for the Deaf to join us as well. But as long as there's a capacity, let me reach out to uh, Shirley and then I'll get back to you, okay?
Okay, I just know that, you know, that's a big part of uh, curriculum now in in school. And since I'm not familiar with that, I would, I just was curious to see what it's all about. I I wouldn't try to be there all the time, just a short period of time. But thank you. I'd appreciate that.
Uh, and this is Sandy. And Mark, that would be a a very good idea if Mickey could do that because um, once we set up a uh, curriculum committee uh, ad hoc, we will uh, we'll be asking Mickey to co-chair that, so. Uh, anyway, um. So, um, that, does anybody else have any old business or anything that needs to be discussed at this time? Tammy?
Yeah, so Wallace is here. Uh, do we need to go back to the finance, the finance part for Wallace?
I don't, uh, we, we can. Wallace, I don't think you've met since we had your last report, but do you have anything you want to add about the Business and Finance Committee?
Hi, this is Wallace. That's correct. The committee has not met since the last board meeting and there's no new update.
Thank you. As I told the rest of the board, those three things, that committee update, those three committees will always be on our agenda uh, so that we can uh, always have news from those committees since they are our standing committees. Okay, um, at this time, I'm, I'm going to ask Mickey to give the Human Resources Report in Candace's stead um, for the Human Resource Meeting that was held uh, yesterday. Dean?
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
And I just, I don't want to step, I know, step out of bounds. Um, I know you all met yesterday as a committee. Any discussion about particular people should occur in closed session.
Right.
That does it, that does not mean that um, Ms. White cannot deliver the report and say this is, these are the recommendations. But if we do want to discuss people, I would recommend we go into closed session or wait till we go into closed.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're not going to do that. Uh, um, I think.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt.
Oh, that's okay. Don't, don't, don't ever apologize to interrupting with me. Um, but uh, I was trying to think yesterday, um, we talked a little bit about, um, adding, uh, uh, I'm not sure. Mickey, do, do you remember if there was anything there that can be in general discussion other than um, our personnel issues yesterday?
No, I don't think there was anything that could be shared generally. Most of it was about personnel issues, I believe.
Okay. All right. Oh, I do have one thing that came out of that meeting yesterday. Um, and I did want to ask for this just so the board is aware and and knows what's going on, because a lot of us don't live here. Um. Main building is having a chiller installed. Uh, and therefore, the building itself is closed. Um.
And this is, sorry to interrupt, Sandy, but this is Tammy. What did you say? A, a what? A chandelier?
A chiller. Chiller. It's the air conditioner.
Oh, a chiller. Gotcha. Okay.
Chandelier would be simple. Uh, and yesterday.
Oh, sorry. I just thought maybe it was new lighting. I thought, oh, a chandelier. How nice.
Oh, me. Uh, anyway, yesterday, Mark, you mentioned that you all were working on a contingency plan in case main building was not open at the beginning of school. And um, I would like to request on the board's behalf that uh, you, you uh, put a plan, a tentative plan together and submit that to us in case you all cannot get into uh, main building uh, for the beginning of school. I know you said something about the students, but you were also questioning kind of undecided about what to do with your staff. So that was.
And and this is Mark, and we are going to be positive that that building is going to be up and running and that we are not going to have to, uh, to worry about where where we are going to place staff. But we do have the Hoffmeyer Building on we do have the Hoffmeyer Building that uh, will, we will use for the students dormitory if we have to on second and third floor. Uh, and the cafeteria is still functioning. Uh, and so the students can go in and get their food, but then they would have to take it back down to Hoffmeyer Cafeteria to be able to um, to be able to eat because the dining area does not have air conditioning. However, the kitchen area has many splits that uh, that is allowing the, them to be able to continue to operate in the cafe. Uh, and so the the Student Health Center is also in Hoffmeyer uh, temporarily. And so the only concern left is the administrative staff that are there on the first floor. But um, we, we will certainly have to meet next week and uh, see how things are going. And we will definitely make up a, develop a contingency plan of where the ten of us are going to be if there is not air conditioning in the building on August the eighth.
Okay. And and that's just so the board is aware of everything that's happening on campus uh, as we move forward. Okay, um. Mickey?
Can't hear you, Mickey.
Mute.
Can't hear you.
Sorry. Um. Since we do have personnel issues to address as a board, I'm looking for a motion that we go into closed session. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, Tammy said I'm glad to second. Oh, yes, this is Jimmy. So I make a motion that we go into closed session. Um, and uh, so we're going to be talking about the status. Sorry, I didn't catch all that. So this would be like for personnel issues. And this is Tammy. I would like to make a second on that motion.
Thank you both. All in favor? Raise your hand.
Okay, uh, Erin, are you prepared to turn over host control to um, Dean?
I can. The breakout room's already ready. I can click the button and you'll go into the room. And I will not be in there.
Yep.
Is it still your computer?
It's still, my computer is still hosting it, but I am not in the meeting hearing what is being discussed in closed session.
And the recording stops?
Yep.
And this is, and this is, this is Tammy.
Okay, we are back in open session. Um. Okay. Uh, I'm going to ask for a vote of the personnel that we just discussed. And I'm going to begin with the residential life trainers. All in favor of those personnel, please raise your hand. Okay. Uh, then the teacher assistants that we discussed, um, all in favor of those, please raise your hand. Uh, okay. Uh, admin one, business office. If you're in favor of that, please raise your hand. All right. And the teacher positions that we just talked about. You're inconsistent with that. Will you raise your hand? Okay. All right. Uh, Mr. Patrick, there is your packet. Personnel packet.
Thank you very much. We will be very busy tomorrow.
Okay.
Next week.
Hmm. Leslie, thank you for your assistance. I think she's gone. Um, does anybody have anything else to discuss? Our next scheduled meeting is for August first. Uh, I did tell Mark that if he had some personnel issues that we needed to address, we can call an emergency meeting with forty-eight hour notice to do nothing but to address those personnel issues. So be thinking about that as we move forward. I know July is a horrible time to try to get people together. Wallace, please continue to enjoy your vacation. Apologize, uh, apologies to your family. Thank you for giving us the time. Uh. So um, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. This is Jimmy.
Okay, Jimmy. Uh, do I have a second?
This is Tammy. I second.
Tammy has seconded. Um, all in favor? Please. Thank you very much, P. Appreciate it. I know this was wrong.
Thank you, interpreters.
Our interpreters. Yeoman's work. Thank you so much.
And you're welcome.
Bye-bye.